Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council, uh, City Council Meeting on December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at sixteen P. M. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I'd like you to please join me in this pleasure allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of delivering justice for all.
Thank you very much. Allison, please do a roll call.
Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Bartholomew.
Here.
Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Counselor Johnson.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Olson.
Here.
Mayor Johnson, the second.
Here. So, thank you very much for joining us this evening. First on tonight's agenda is
appeal of a city code, Ms. Darla Luther. However, the city attorney is going to lay some ground rules, and he'll call you up to the front as soon as he's done with this. Will you come up now? Please come on up. And for the time, it'll be fifteen minutes for both Ms. Luther's and her team and the city, and I will moderate that. I'll have the timer up here with me. I will start it when you start talking on, on your particular topics, okay? Uh, because we have a certain time limit on our, our clock we use for our timing. So, city attorney, please lay the, read the ground rules.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Turn your mic, mic up, please.
Am I on? Can you?
We'll pull a little closer.
Okay. And this, I'm, I'm trained on the other one where if I was, hear that thing, it would go crazy. So, I just wanted to, we, we had talked the other night, on Monday night, at the work session about how each side will have fifteen minutes to present their argument, and if you have questions, substantive questions, please ask them during that fifteen-minute argument. In fact, I think, uh, counselor, uh, over here, Mr. Tyler, will invite you to do so. Uh, what we were asking, just making sure you weren't expressing your, your opinions or, or going into deliberations during the presentation, because that takes time away from, from the petitioner here, and we don't want to do that. Uh, but fifteen minutes on each side, and then afterwards, the council will deliberate and come up, uh, come to a decision on this. Uh, tonight, I'll just want to explain where we're at on this, and I, I can clarify it again after the, the hearing is over, if you would like, but the code is, the code is in place. Code's been in place since eighty-five, eighty-nine, depending on what amendment you're looking at. A, a decision's been made by the director tonight to interpret the code a certain way. If the council votes tonight with four votes to, and, to keep that, the status quo, then nothing will happen. Um, that Ms. Luther's appeal will be denied. If we don't have four votes of the council, which doesn't look like we have that issue now, I had prepared this before, when I thought we might only have, uh, we might be missing a counselor. But, um, so, if we, if there is no vote tonight, for whatever reason, we have people recuse themselves, and, and we don't have four votes, then, again, the code will stay the same, and the appeal will be denied. If the appeal, if you wanted the, uh, appeal to be upheld and the code to be changed, we will need four votes of the council to do that. So, we, we need a motion to, to change the code or to, or to interpret the code in a different way, and we'd need four votes to do that. And, and just letting you know ahead of time there. Um, are there any questions before we get started on that? All right, Mayor, I think we're ready.
So, could you please do me a favor? Introduce yourselves, and then, once you've introduced yourselves, tell us why you're here, and then I will then start the clock.
Okay. And, and, uh, my name is Bob Tyler.
Hi, Bob.
I'm an attorney. Um, could I have some materials to pass out to y'all?
Is that acceptable? Please.
That's fine, yeah.
Give them to the city clerk, she'll take care of it. So, when she's done with that, then we can go ahead and do the introductions. When she's done with that, we go ahead and do the introductions.
And please put the, pull the microphone much closer to your mouth.
Yes, it's a, it's a, yes.
Yeah, I'm used to standing up while I'm talking, so this is gonna be a challenge for me.
So, go ahead and make your introductions, and then we'll get started.
All right. Uh, I'm here today with my client, Darla Luther. My name is Bob Tyler. I'm an attorney with Reynolds Law Firm.
Thank you. Clock starts now.
All right, thank you. Um, I want to be clear about one thing. We are not here asking to change the code. We are here today asking to change the interpretation of the code, because I think it's being wrongly, wrongfully interpreted presently. Um, Ms. Luther has had a well on, on her property, and I think the property owner before her had the well on the property too. It's, the well's been there for fifty years. Five-oh, fifty years. It's not potable water, which means you can't drink it without getting sick. This water will never, this well will never be connected to the house, because if you did, you'd be making yourself and your family sick, and who's, no one's going to do that. Um, a, air quotes, "a concerned citizen" contacted the city and said, "You know, Darla Luther's got a well." Ms. Luther's a, a, a community service officer. Her job is enforcement of code. I'm guessing there's somebody out there that has a grudge against her for doing her job, and that person made a complaint and said she's got a well on her property that's, doesn't have a backflow device. And that's true. She does have a well on her property, doesn't have a backflow device, and the reason it doesn't have a backflow device on there is because it doesn't need one. It's not connected to the city water supply. It will never be connected to the city water supply, because it's not drinking water. Now, what the city does say is that they've interpreted city code eleven point zero-two, point two-two-five, and that's in the third paragraph of the first page that I gave to you. And I would ask you to turn to the last page, not the last page, sorry, the second-to-last page, which is that section of code. And Mr. Kidd was correct. If any of y'all have a question, please feel free to interrupt me and ask me that question at any time. Now, eleven oh-point-oh-one, point two-two-five, backflow prevention requirements, is what the city relies on. And basically, the little paragraph two there says, "Installation backflow prevention assemblies shall be installed." Dot, dot, dot. Wherever any of the following conditions exist, A, where there's an auxiliary water supply which is or can be connected to the potable water piping. That's the part the city relies on, because they've interpreted "can be connected" to mean possible to be connected. It doesn't say possible here. It says "can be connected." And the question I have when I read that, as an attorney, because we interpret statutes, we interpret code, what I think about that is, what does "can be connected" mean? Does it mean possible? Because the, because people that wrote the code could have wrote "possible" in if they wanted to. They chose not to. So, we, we know that they didn't choose for this to mean impossible. They chose it to mean can. And I would argue to y'all that that can means legally can. That means you can lawfully connect it, and you can't lawfully connect it without a backflow device. So, that's when, if, if it can lawfully, or reasonably connected. Who's gonna reasonably connect a well with non-potable water to a water supply? Nobody, that's who. And I think reasonably connected is how we should interpret that. It can't legally be connected, because there's no backflow prevention on there at the time, so that's not gonna work. Now, there's also a B, conveying fluids or liquids or gases. That doesn't apply. There's also C, where there are intricate plumbing arrangements. That doesn't apply. Then there's D, and this one I find really interesting, especially when you look at it in the context of A. D says, "When there has been a history of repeating the same or similar crossconnections, even though these have been removed or disconnected." So, if there's a history of a well being connected and disconnected, and connected and disconnected, then you can require a backflow prevention device. Now, if the city's interpretation is correct, that section A means can be connected, then why on earth would you need D? You would never need D, because, because A says if it's possible, and obviously, if it's been connected, if there's a history of connections, then, then it can be connected. And, and, but, but the, the people that drafted this code felt like it was necessary to have D. And the reason that they felt it was necessary to have D is because A is not meant to mean possible. A is meant to be reasonably can be connected, and nobody's gonna reasonably connect potable water.
Non-
Non-
Thank you.
Non-potable water, I'm sorry. So, I mean, that's, that's generally where we are. If you have questions, I'd, I'd, I'd love to answer your questions and not just sit over here talking to myself. So, if you guys have questions, I'd love to hear them.
Counsel.
I do have one question.
Please.
Thank you. I wrote it down, so I wouldn't screw it up. Um, so, the city can put a device in on the city's side of the system per O R S premises isolation, I think. Um, I don't understand why, if they want to do that, they just don't put it on their side and take care of it. Um, I, I, well, you just explained to us, makes really good sense to me, but I felt that way the first time this was presented to us. So, um, um, I, I can say that I am in favor of changing the interpretation of the code.
So, Counselor Novak, we're not supposed to offer an opinion at this time?
I'm not deliberating. I'm sorry. You're right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Forgive me. But, but I, that's a legitimate question, I think.
Can, can you have, let him answer the question?
Yes.
And, yeah, I, I agree with you. I think that, um, I, I think that the interpretation of the code is problematic. I think it's problematic that we are here tonight because a concerned citizen made a complaint about a city code enforcement officer. I think that she should be supported for doing her job, and if somebody's mad at her for doing her job, for no reason except that people get mad about stuff like that, we should not be here tonight talking about that.
One more question, please.
Well, I'm just wondering if, if a response to the question that I asked, if the city, if they really want to do that, couldn't they do it on their own side and take care of it?
Yes, absolutely. They could do it on their own side. If they want to come in and install backflow prevention devices, if it's that important to them, they can do that. What they've decided to do instead is tell Darla, they're gonna shut off her water unless she spends over a thousand dollars, um, putting a device on. They claim that it's gonna cost less than that. She's gone out and got bids. It's been over a thousand dollars, almost two thousand dollars to get this done, for a well that's been on that property for fifty years, and never at one time connected to the city water supply, that never would be ever one time connected to the city water supply, because you'd be poisoning yourself and your family if you were drinking that water. Nobody wants E. coli. Nobody wants to have diarrhea for a month. No one's going to do that. This is, this, this problem begins, I think, and ends with a concerned citizen complaint, which we should not put up with.
Counsel, any other questions? Not right now? Any questions? Okay, thank you. Is there more? We have six minutes and fifty seconds.
Well, can I reserve some for rebuttal after Mr. Kidd?
Say again?
May I reserve some for rebuttal after Mr. Kidd?
Sure. So, let me write that down. Six forty-one.
Thank you.
Reserve rebuttal. Okay. So, city attorney, director?
Thank you. I'll, I'll go ahead and start it. So, uh, Mr. Tyler's correct that the, the applicable code is eleven point oh-one, point two-two-five, backflow prevention requirements. It is, uh, sub-two, uh, sub-two, sub-A, which says backflow for, for preventions, uh, assemblies shall be installed, and then under sub-A, where there's an auxiliary water supply, i.e. a well, which is or can be connected to potable water piping. Now, what, uh, opposing counsel was talking about a, a minute ago, about, well, can doesn't mean possible, or shouldn't be interpreted as possible, that if the city wanted to be possible, they would have wrote that. He's referring, there's a statute in Oregon, O R S one-seventy-four, and, and part of that subsection of one-seventy-four says that you cannot insert what's been omitted or omit what's been inserted in a statute, okay? Uh, but in this case, can does mean possible. In fact, when I look at definitions of the word can, I have the first three that pop up tonight, be physically or mentally able to, know how to, or use to indicate possibility. What the council, what the co-counsel or opposing counsel's asking is that we, we'd interpret as legally possible, and that would violate statutory construction of O R one, O R S one-seventy-four, because if the council or the city wanted legally, uh, to be part of the code, they would have, they would have put that in there. Uh, and furthermore, I'm not quite sure how you can have two systems that can't be legally connected. Uh, I mean, they can always be connected, and I, I'll have our, our public works director talk about that, but what makes it legal to connect is, once you connect it, you install a backflow device on, or it has to have a backflow device on it in order to be, be connected. What counsel was saying tonight was that it can never be connected, um, it's, and, but we don't know that. It says, it hasn't been connected in fifty years, and it never can be or never will be connected. There's no way to know that, that it can't be connected. I can give you an example of how this could be a problem. And if you had a, this house, for example, I believe was built in nineteen seventy-two or somewhere around that time, a house built in nineteen seventy-two that has a well on it. That well might have been used, might have, that well could have been the, the potable water in nineteen seventy-two, I'm not sure. But in any event, that well is there, and now there's a, an elaborate backyard garden and sprinkler system that costs fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. And if you get a new one, go out and price them, they're, they're quite expensive. And one day, the well runs dry, or the well collapses, and they say, "Wow, we gotta go get a new well dug." Well, guess what? You can't get a new well dug in that area now. The D U Q says, "No, you're not gonna, you can't put a new well in." So, now your, your elaborate garden and, and sprinkler system is, is obsolete. But wait, a plumber or somebody who's handy with plumbing says, "Well, if you just connect these two pipes together right here, your system's gonna work again." Well, okay, what's that gonna cost me? Hardly nothing. So, yeah, the city water's gonna be more expensive than well water, but at least your system will work, and your, your garden will still survive. That crossconnection right there would put, would, would connect potable water into that system, and that, and that system is then connected to the city's system, and without a backflow device, that could be dangerous. And counsel even somewhat conceded that by saying, "We don't want E. coli. We're not gonna drink that water." If that water gets mixed into the system by accident, then we, we could have a problem. That's what this law, this ordinance is in place for, to begin with. It's to protect the city water system, which, uh, we, we have an obligation to do. Uh, let's see. The other, the question that came up about, can we put a backflow device on the other side of the, of the other side of the meter? Can the city install that? The answer is, yes, they can. But under that theory, then every time someone decided they wanted to put a sprinkler system into their house, or a, a new developer comes in and builds a bunch of track houses and has sprinkler systems in them, then the city would be required to go out each time at their own expense and install a backflow device on those houses, because someone decided they wanted a sprinkler system, rather than put that burden on the homeowner themselves, who made the decision to do so. But ultimately, in this case, po- the word can is, in our code, says, "Which is or can be." Can be means possible to be. The only way that it's not possible to be would be, and reasonable can be interpreted, and I think, uh, Mr. Tyler put that in a memo that he sent to you tonight, that reasonable should be implied. Reasonable, yes. If there's a, a line or a well that's seven hundred feet from the, from the city line, is it reasonable that someone's gonna run a line out there to, to connect it to potable water? Probably not, in that case. But that's not the situation here. This lot is not a small lot that Mrs. Luther lives on, but it's a half acre, and the, and the lines are very close together, and our, uh, you know, we, our public works director can speak to that as well. So, that's all I have, if anyone has any questions.
So, Counselor Smith has a question.
Okay. Um, Mr. Kidd, the city has nine thousand accounts with backflow prevention devices on them. If the code were to be reinterpreted, would that reinterpretation be retroactive and affect, and how would that affect those existing accounts?
If the code was reinterpreted possibly, if the code was changed, then no. The ch- code could be changed, and it wouldn't act to be retroactive to, those people wouldn't be entitled, for example, a refund of, that they put in their backflow devices. Um, so, no. Um, yeah, that would be, that'd be how it would work.
I'd like to, I think there is a misunderstanding, because what the- Don't breathe on me. There's a misunderstanding. What the opposing counsel is saying is that the city is concerned that the well will be connected to the city water system. That is not and has never been the concern. What the concern is, and the realistic possibility is, is that underground lines fed by a well, which they have said is not potable, could be accidentally or intentionally connected to underground lines fed by the city water system that serve the house. When you have a pipe connected to another pipe without a check valve, water could flow in either direction. If you have a line from a well connected to their private service line fed by the city's water system, the city's water system is at risk from a backflow or backpressure event pulling water from the well into the city water system, which could potentially create a health hazard, because, as noted, that well is not potable. We are required, as the owners and operators of a public water system, we are required to protect the public water system from potential crosscontamination and exposure to pollutants or health hazards. If you choose to not require us, require Mrs. Luther to install a backflow device, you will be putting the city at risk of being in violation of state rule for public water systems. You can do that, if you would like, or you could tell us to put city-owned backflow of, devices on the city's side of the meter, which then every other person would ask for, and then I would be coming to you to ask you how you would like us to pay for that.
Well, I see Counselor Kupczynski first, then Counselor Novak.
Director Bailey, it may be tangential, or maybe you, uh, we don't have an answer to it, but do we know, or is there even a way to know how many other, um, sites are in similar condition that have a well that are not connected, or do, or do not have a backflow, uh?
That don't have a backflow device? We don't know. But the, um, most of these situations, are similar in that a well was put in decades ago, and then later on, the city water system was extended by this property, and the property owner chose to connect to the city water system. Most of them are found either by our staff driving by and saying, "Hmm, that looks like a wellhouse on that property. Let me go see if they're already in my system for a backflow device." And if not, our staff person will contact them, or by someone telling us. The assertion that, um, well, all I'll say is, it is true. We were told by an anonymous person that there was a well on this property. That is not in uncommon. Counselor Smith can tell you that it's very common for people to anonymously report a multitude of code violations around town as they happen to see them. But no, we, we don't know how many have wells on city water and don't have backflow devices. Our staff diligently looks for those, because every one of those represents a hazard to the public water system, and we are obligated to protect the system from those. So, we do look for those.
Are you done? Counselor Novak, you're next.
Thank you. Um, I guess I need clarification, uh, or maybe I misheard you. I heard you say that foreseeably, the water, the non-potable water could be pulled into our supply from Ms. Luther's well. I don't understand how that's in the realm of possibility when there's no connection.
Well, there wouldn't be if there's no connection. You're right. What the code says is, where there is or could be, can be, um, a connection to a potable water piping, the backflow device is required. We don't know what's gonna happen on this property next week, next year, ten years, twenty years from now. If someone accidentally or intentionally, in the scenario that Sean described, connects their irrigation piping to the pipe from the city's system that is connected to potable water, then that connection creates the potential for water to be pulled back into the system, contaminating the system.
And that's based on a lot of ifs. I just want to call everyone's attention to the fact, again, which was mentioned earlier, that Mrs. Luther is a compliance officer. I find it very difficult to believe that she would-
You're testifying.
I'm testifying?
Yes, you are.
Oops. Okay, so not okay to make a comment?
She asked your question. We'll move on to the next question.
Okay, so I, I can't make that comment right now? When do I, is there a time when I can't-
We're gonna discuss it after-
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, write your, write your questions down, comments down.
Counselor Kupczynski, I'm not sure if you were, wanted this information, but we, we think there's approximately three hundred customers that are in a similar situation to Ms. Luther that do, that were required to have backflow devices that have them. If, if, I don't know if that was something you were interested in.
Well, you, they, they have the backflow devices.
They do have them.
We don't know how many have the wells.
Right. We don't know how many don't, but we know that there's about three hundred customers in that same situation that do.
Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, so Director Bailey, let me see if I get this right, that basically, uh, someone who has a well, um, and they have irrigation systems, which aren't, it's not a water system, a city water system's last recorded on any public documents. And so, um, say, if she sells the property, and someone decides, "Oh, well, I'm gonna do something else," and they don't have a, what is it, diagram or schematic of the pipes, that's when this accident could happen, that something, uh, could, um, accidentally be done, maybe not on purpose, but it could, because, I mean, like, me and my property, we have a well, we're not hooked up, but I don't have all of the, um, where all the pipes are. And so, is that what we're trying to, to say, that it could happen that way?
Yeah, that is one possibility.
Thank you. So, you have a minute forty-five left.
Okay, I was gonna say, crossconnections in general, not just in this situation, are, can, can be a problem. It wasn't, I think it was beginning of this year, end of last year, I had a case where, actually, the, the person was in, in municipal court that connected their sewer line into the stormwater drain. And so, it, untreated raw sewage went right out into a, into the storm drain, into a retention pond next to someone else's house. Now, in that particular case, uh, the city had alleged that that was an intentional thing, and, and, but, I mean, it's a crossconnection issue, and crossconnections can be accidental and, and, or intentional, and, and, you know, so we're just trying to protect the system, so.
You have a minute left?
We're, we're finished, Your Honor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, you have six minutes, forty seconds for rebuttal. Let me go reset my clock.
Thank you.
Just a second, just a second. I have to manually change it. So, six forty showing. I'll start the clock, okay? Your floor?
This well-
Can't hear you. Thank you.
This well has had non-potable water, by testing, for fifty years. I do not believe that a request to tie the well in to the house would be legally allowed. I don't think you'd get a permit for tying in a non-potable well. I could be wrong. I don't know the codes, and I don't know the practices of the Albany Water Department, but I can't believe that they would say, "Yeah, you can go ahead and tie that non-potable water into your house, as long as there's a backflow thing, because we don't care if you get sick." I don't think that- I don't think that's going to happen, because they do care if people get sick, and they're not going to let it happen. This well cannot be legally connected. It can be illegally connected, perhaps accidentally connected, but anybody that's doing something like that's doing it without a permit. They're breaking the law. And this code was written. We also heard that everybody that wants to put in a sprinkler system would have to, would have to have the city pay for a backflow device. Well, is the sprinkler system connected to the housing water supply? Because if so, that's not the same situation that we have here. This well is not connected to the house. It's not connected to the city water supply, never has been, and I don't think ever will Even if you put in a backflow prevention device, it still wouldn't be, because it's There is a section in here, well, first of all, I looked up can in the dictionary as well. It has about 10 different definitions. Yes, one of them is possible, but it's got nine other definitions. Again, we are not asking the city to change the code. We have one person, with all due respect, we have one person who has said, I think it should be possible. I think can means possible. We have one person who said that. Now, I'm here, it's not my job, but I'm here saying, I think can does not mean possible. And when we talk about how we interpret the law, how we interpret the codes, you know, again, we need to be looking at this in terms of, first of all, what did the people who wrote this mean? They did not mean possible, because if they meant possible, they wouldn't have needed any of these other provisions. They wouldn't have needed to say the piping's intricate. They wouldn't have needed to say that the piping is installed and operated in a manner which could cause a cross-connection. We wouldn't need the part where it says, there's a history of repeated cross-connection. We wouldn't need any of those, because all we need is Section A, it's possible, and we feel like it, so that's what we're going to do. And, you know, all of us, all of us have a different idea of what's reasonable. The majority of us can agree on what's reasonable to the majority of us, and there'll be some people on one side and some people on the other side, but what's reasonable to most of us is going to be what's in the middle. We have one person who said can means possible. And we've got seven folks here. Well, we've got six folks, but seven if there's a tie. We've got seven folks here, and the majority of you all can say to yourself, I don't think can means possible in this context. I don't think it's reasonable to make this, to interpret this statute in this way, in this context. If we're talking about a well that's connected to the city water supply, of course it's reasonable to make sure that there's a backflow prevention. If we're talking about a sprinkler system that's connected to the water supply, of course it's reasonable to have a backflow prevention. If we've got a well that's been there 50 years, never been connected to the water supply, it's not reasonable. It's just not. And it's one person who made a decision, I think with the best of intentions, and I don't fault her, but it's one person who made a decision. And that doesn't make it the law. That doesn't make it the correct interpretation. This well cannot be legally connected to the water, to the city water supply or the house. It's not connected to the city water supply or the house. It hasn't been connected to the city water supply and the house. There may be 9,000 people with backflow prevention devices, but I bet almost all of them are connected, whatever the issue is, is connected to the city water supply. This is an unusual situation where you have a well that's not potable water, we have a well that's never been connected, that nobody in their right mind ever would connect, and, you know, I've only been here since June. I've been on a couple cases with Mr. Kidd. I enjoy working with him. I think he's a good lawyer, but I just don't think that you're going to have a situation where somebody's going to go out in the backyard and go, I don't know where this pipe goes, but I'm going to connect it up to this other pipe over here. I just don't see that ever happening. And I don't think, I think it's almost impossible for this well to ever be connected to the water, unless somebody somehow cleans it up so that the water's drinking water. I mean, I just, again, the only reason I would ever connect a well to my house if I had city water was if I wanted to save money. And I don't want to drink, I don't want to drink dirty water, and I don't want anybody else drinking it either. I can't, I just can't imagine anybody ever doing something like that.
Again, if y'all have any questions, I would love to answer them. I have eighteen seconds.
Eighteen seconds.
I have a question.
Please.
Question for Public Works Director. How long have we had this requirement for public water systems, for our public water system in specific?
Well, this code, I think, was written after the city purchased the system from Pacific Power in 1986-ish?
Eighty-five, yeah.
Eighty-five. And it falls from state rules, OARs, that the state drinking water program are responsible for promulgating and enforcing.
How long have you been the Public Works Director?
I've been the Public Works, Public Works Director for almost two years, and before that, I was the Operations Director since 2015. So, responsible for this program as a director since 2015.
Okay. And the regulation goes back to 1985?
Yes.
Thank you.
So-
May I make one comment?
Sure.
If you look at Exhibit Two of the materials that I've given to you, there's an email between Ms. Luther and Ms. Ladina Ashley from the state regarding water regulation, and she states, the state person says, first of all, I don't get involved in disputes with the city, but secondly, the state would not have a problem with your position.
May I make a counterpoint?
The state would not require back-
So, let me, so we're done with, we're done with testimony. Make your comment, and then from that point, the council will then deliberate, correct?
That's correct. I would, I would say that since this just came out, if you, whatever the exhibit is that you're looking at, and Ms. Bailey hasn't had a chance to, we haven't had a chance to respond to that.
Okay.
I mean, we have, so if you have a question, and she could respond to it, or maybe put it in the context.
So, go ahead and get your question done, and then we'll have you read it, and we'll-
Sure.
Start deliberation.
Excuse me. The email, excuse me, that he's referring to is with a staff person at the State Water Resources Department. Drinking water programs are regulated by the state drinking water program, which is part of the Oregon Health Authority. A completely separate department has no, the Water Resource Department has no regulatory authority over the drinking water program.
So, this person is not qualified to speak on this particular issue?
I don't know that person, but they are not a part of the agency that regulates drinking water.
Okay, that's clear.
Just a point of order, the second paragraph on that email does say that they defer to local authorities if it is in the city-county jurisdiction.
That's true.
And Mayor, at this point, I think both sides have made their presentations, but that doesn't stop counsel from asking additional questions.
Agreed. So, that's where we're going to go next.
Okay.
So, counsel, I would appreciate if you asked clear and concise questions, not testify, just get your questions answered, and then we can deliberate on the issue. Sir?
Can you tell me, can you tell me what the city's water pressure would be and the location where their house is?
I don't know off the top of my head, but typically, water pressures in the system range between, excuse me, 60 to 80 PSI, pounds per square inch. By law, we're required to maintain, I believe it's at least 20 pounds per square inch at the meter in order to prevent back siphonage events. So, it would be, I don't know what the pressure is at that house, but it's definitely greater than 20, it's probably in the 60 pounds per square inch range.
Okay, and we don't, we don't have water towers here in Albany-
We do.
-that maintain the pressure.
We do. We have water reservoirs that are, they're not elevated, like you see a lot of times, but they're above ground, and we also have pump stations that maintain the pressure in the system, and all of that is automated.
So, are they pressured in the tank?
The tank provides pressure via gravity, so head pressure from the top of the tank, but then there are also water pump stations associated with every reservoir.
So, how widespread would power loss have to be to have our pumps all fail in that part of town?
Without looking at the water model, I can't tell you which pump station is critical for that neighborhood, but it wouldn't necessarily be a power failure. A large main break, like the big main that's on Crocker or Gibson Hill that feeds this neighborhood, if that main were to break, you could lose enough pressure to create a back siphonage event that would pull water backwards from houses. And in any case, if we lost pressure at the meter, we would be issuing boil water notices for that situation. So, it doesn't have to be a power outage. It could be a large main break that creates a loss of pressure.
How often does that happen?
Thankfully, not often.
Yeah, the only failure like that I know is in the Eighth Street Canal about 20, 25 years ago. And how much pressure does your pump generate in your well, you know?
I don't, I do not know. I have the irrigation, the form that I gave you guys before in all your packets that showed what the results were from the irrigation company that came out, and I believe it stated in there what the pressures were when they tested to make sure that there was no backflow. So, I believe he quoted some pressures in there.
You might have to repeat that on mic. I think they're having trouble hearing you.
The company that came out and did the backflow testing at my residence, they did testing, and they, I think on those documents that I provided you all a copy with, it has some pressures on there that was within the range that they tested to prove that there was no backflow. So, that would say what the pressure was.
So, the city pressure was higher than your pump pressure, perhaps?
I wouldn't be able to say, honestly.
I would think it would be.
Any other questions? Are you done, counsel?
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions for counsel?
I have some information in front of me, and I'm wondering, Director Bailey, if you can tell me, is what Counselor Olson asked about, is that defined in terms of maximum flow in gallons per minute? Or is that, am I looking at the wrong info? I have some info here that Ms. Luther just mentioned, having given us, and I'm trying to find an answer.
No, he was asking pressure, which the units on pressure would be pounds per square inch, PSI.
Pounds per square inch, okay. Probably in here somewhere.
You have a question, Counselor? Counselor Johnson?
I guess I'd ask, okay, you say it's non-potable water. Okay. Our wells aren't the same. Our well, I mean, how is it declared non-potable, and could it not be made potable by installing, you know, different filters or something like that? I'm thinking of the future. I don't think you're going to be doing it, and I'm, sorry, that's an opinion, but, so I'm thinking, like, for in the future, if someone decided, I mean, I don't know what non-potable means to you.
Non-potable means to me that it's not drinkable or usable for human consumption, or animal consumption, for that matter.
Okay, and who declared that? Who decided?
I was told by the people who sold the house to us that the water was not potable and that it never has been. It's only got four spigots used to water part of the yard. That's all that it's ever been, and they said that's all it's ever been used for. And it, it's kind of rusty smelling, so when, like, when it first gets going in the spring. So, I have just chosen never to use it.
Yeah, sure, I understand that. So, I was just, I'm just thinking of the future, that, okay, if someone decided, oh, I want to make this well potable, and so I can add some features to it, instruments or whatever, and that's when this would come in. So, I think that's what I'm troubling me, is that it might not happen now, but maybe in the future, I mean, if we nip this in the bud now, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a problem in the future. That's the only thing I'm trying to figure out. Thank you.
Counselor Novak?
I do have some information here on one of the pages in this packet that addresses PSI, and it says, what was the pressure of the potable water system? And the response is 40 PSI, and it says, results of pressure test, tested for 20 minutes or more with no documented pressure loss, no leaks located on the domestic hot-cold system at this time.
What's the source?
It's, it's the report that Ms. Luther presented to us months ago.
So, is non-potable water is 40 PSI?
No, that's-
Potable water?
That's from, they tested the well.
Okay.
And, I'm sorry, they tested the pressure between the well. They shut, the process is more complicated, if you read it, that they opened up certain water spigots on the house, and then at the well to, to test the pressure, because the pressure, I guess, would reduce if it was all open, right? And if it was connected, it would show one pressure, and if it's not connected, the pressure wouldn't change. And that's basically what the testing showed, was that there was no change, therefore, it is not connected. There's no change, because they opened everything up, and there was no change in the pressure to the water from the well. Okay?
Just to restate, some people came out to test, to be, to test whether or not the well was connected to the city water or the house, either one. They tested that, and they determined that it was not connected to the house, and it was not connected to the city line.
So, Counselor Bailey, do you have results of that test?
I got a copy of the report. I do. And so, there's, what it, I think, is saying is, the pressure at the meter from the city side was 40 PSI, which is perfectly fine.
I think counsel's done.
What's that?
What would you like us to do? What's next?
This would be a time to deliberate amongst yourselves and make a decision. If you choose to make a decision tonight, which I would, I would encourage you to do, so we don't come back and have a different meeting on it, but it's up to you. It's your call.
Counsel, what would you like to do with this?
I couldn't understand what you said.
Yeah, speak into a microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I said, this would be the time that you guys would deliberate and make a decision on this tonight. Well, at least, that's what we would hope for, anyway. You could come back at a different meeting and do this over again and deliberate where there, but then the same people may not be here to answer questions. So, tonight, you're going to probably have this information, and it's fresh in your head, as you're ever going to. If this were a Court of Appeals or a Land Use Board of Appeals hearing, you would go back and come up with a decision and have a staff attorney write a written legal opinion on, or order, but that's not, that's not this. So, you could make a decision tonight, just amongst yourselves, and let us know what that is.
I could point out, some of us may not be back.
That's a good point, too, Counselor. That's true. This, we have one more city council meeting after this, and then three council members won't be on here, so that is, probably tonight would be the best time to make that decision.
Counselor Novak?
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to maintain what I said earlier. My thoughts on this matter have not changed since first hearing of it, and I am strongly in favor of changing the interpretation, the way this was interpreted in this case. I just think that makes total sense, and I, I don't think it's right to do anything other than give a different interpretation in this case. I think that there are times to take things on a case-by-case basis rather than a blanket. I think this is one of those times.
Counselor, any other comments?
Are you making a motion?
I, I guess so. I don't want to cut anyone off from further deliberation, but I would, I would move that we change the interpretation in this case, for this case. And if there's anything that comes up- And if there's anything that comes up in the next twenty years or whenever we next have an issue like this, then we'll, I would like to consider that case on its own merits and not apply some blanket for what might possibly happen, maybe, maybe someday, maybe not with Ms. Luther, but someone else. I don't think that's a good way to take care of business.
We have a, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yeah, do I understand the motion is to, uh, not enforce our rules on backflow?
Yes, to not force Ms. Luther to put.
Not force, not enforce the rule.
Backflow.
Right.
Yeah. And I'll second it if that's the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
No.
I said no, there wasn't any, after the motion and the second, there should have been some chance to.
Should have some discussion.
Some discussion on it, yeah. And I was just.
Said I didn't want to jump the gun on that if people wanted to.
Well, I was waiting for a discussion. Nobody said anything.
Right.
That's right.
So.
So you're, you signed.
Well, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of setting precedent is what I'm thinking of, you know? It might be great to take, if you do one now, someone's going to come back and say, well, okay, you did, you did it for that person, so you can do it for me, too. And I, that is a whole new can of worms. So that's why I voted no, because I think we have to, you know, we don't like all the laws we have, but it's for the safety of the city, the people in the city, and it might not be the best for everyone, but a rule's a rule.
So can you, can you do a roll call vote, please? Oh, excuse me, Stacy. Counselor Bartholomew has a comment.
Um, yes, I, I don't know that, I, I am agreeing with Counselor Johnson that, that we, uh, we have rules and regulations for, for things and that they should be consistent. Sometimes, maybe the rule itself may not be adequate or reasonable at times, but that doesn't mean it's, that we should make exceptions to the rules. We either change the rule or we follow the rule.
Okay, so Counsel, we have a roll call vote, please?
Could I clarify, clarify, please, the motion? I heard Counselor Novak's move to change the interpretation in this case, and I heard Counselor Olson suggest that the motion was to, what, it was different from, I'm sorry. Um, I heard two different types of motions.
So can you restate your motion?
Can you restate?
Yeah.
Did I, well, maybe this will help, because I think this is going to help for purposes of, of future appeals, perhaps. Could I suggest that, and you can clarify what your language was, but then to either affirm or deny the appeal, Ms. Luther's appeal? So if you, so what you were, what your explanation was and would be an affirming the appeal. So at the end, which, if you'd say that, that would, that would help.
Sure. I'll restate the motion.
If, if I may.
Yes.
I, what Ms. Novak said was that she wanted to make a motion to change the interpretation of the rule. And if that is what affirm the appeal means, then I'm fine with that.
That's what I believe it means, right? Is that what you meant?
That's what I meant when I said that, yes. I meant to affirm the appeal and to change the interpretation on this specific case for the reasons that have been explained tonight.
Okay, we, thank you very much, Counselor Novak. Do you have that, Allison? Are you good?
Yes, thank you.
Counselor, we have a second?
Yes, I'll second.
All those in, in favor of affirming their appeal, say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yep.
Those in opposition to the appeal, say no.
No.
Aye.
No.
Or no.
Can we roll call vote, please, so we can get it on the record?
Thank you. Those in favor of affirming, Novak?
Yes.
Counselor Bartholomew?
No.
Counselor Kopczynski?
No.
Counselor Johnson?
No.
Counselor Smith?
No.
Counselor Olson?
Yes.
Thank you, that's four to two.
So motion failed?
The motion failed.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. We'll move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler. Next on nights, tonight's agenda is a legislative public hearing regarding housing related amendments to the Albany Development Code as described in Planning File DC 02-22. The applicant is the City Attorney, City of Albany Community Development Department. I call to order this public hearing at six, four fifty-five PM, December twelfth. If you wish to testify, there will be two options available, which were described in the council agenda and the notice of materials. At this time, I'll call the reading of the meeting procedures by a comprehensive planning manager, Anne Catlin.
For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue.
Excuse me, Ms. Catlin.
Can you hear you?
Can you pull it a little closer, please?
Sure. Can you hear me now? I think I can hear myself. Sorry. For those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards that I will describe or other criteria in the Conference of Plan or Development Code which you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the City Council may allow continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond.
Thank you. At this time, a call for staff report from Ms. Catlin, Mrs. Catlin?
Thank you. This is a package of legislative amendments that were initiated by city staff, but these are in response to several public requests that we brought forward to you in a work session with the Planning Commission back in August. And these are the items that had a majority of support. But we also have one that is, is compliance with House Bill four thousand, forty sixty-four. So on the public requests, we've got, um, with the Housing Options Project, which was complying with House Bill two thousand and one, there were several requests that were brought forward, and a couple of those are in your packet. And then we've also continued to do community outreach on housing needs, and one of the proposals is from that outreach over the last two years with, with different housing projects. So in Article Three, and I will explain that we did take this with Planning Commission, and Planning Commission recommended most of the changes except for one, and I will identify that by, you have two ordinances in your packet. One contains, ordinance number one contains all of the elements that the Planning Commission supported, and then the second ordinance, still describing the proposed amendment to you, but they did not recommend approval. So in Article Three, we're looking at removing lot depth standards in all residential zones. The lot size can be, lot size and lot width will essentially determine lot depth, and we think this is a, a good recommendation, as it might allow for more variety in lot shapes and sizes as well as more efficient development patterns. A second requested amendment in Article Three is to reduce the side yard setback in the RM zone only for two-story, single and middle housing developments. The current setback is five feet, and the request is to reduce that to three feet. I'll have you know that there is a ten-foot setback for buildings that are three or more stories or that are multi-dwelling unit developments. And this is contained in ordinance two, if you wish to consider that. So another public request was related to the driveway and garage with allowances for triplexes and fourplexes. The current standard is forty feet for all driveways combined, which would allow for twelve-foot wide driveways for triplexes but not fourplexes, and we heard that that is a common width. So the proposal would increase that to forty-eight feet per frontage, and then if there were shared driveways, twenty feet, a maximum of twenty feet, increase that to twenty-four feet, and that affects a few of the figures in Article Eight. So then, a request that staff is bringing forward is to comply with House Bill forty sixty-four, which essentially says that we can no longer have specific siting standards for manufactured homes and prefabricated, prefabricated structures where we allow single detached dwellings. So the proposed amendments would remove, what we currently have is our classification of different manufactured homes, which require different sizes and different zones. We can't do that anymore. And then Article Ten does not really talk about prefabricated structures. So we are removing language that is, does not comply with state law, and we are adding prefabricated dwellings to the standards in Article Ten and also in, in Article Twenty-two, a definition.
So you're just basically getting rid of manufactured and putting in prefabricated?
Can you say that again, closer to the mic?
So she's removing the word ma, not she, but the law, is removing manufactured and inserting prefabricated?
Not exactly. It's manufactured and prefabricated. They're two different types of dwelling units.
Okay.
But they are manufactured off-site.
Correct.
And assembled onsite. Right. So for Development Code text amendments or view criteria are up on the screen, but essentially we want to ensure that they better achieve the goals and policies of the Conference of Plan than the existing language, and that the amendments are consistent with any applicable purpose statements for any of the base zones and districts where regulations are proposed. So in the staff report findings and conclusions, the different applicable Conference of Plan and statewide planning goals are listed here, but just in summary, I'll try to keep it short. We did find that the proposals, all of them do, are consistent with our Conference of Plan. And similar to the recent slide, the staff analysis found that the proposed amendments are consistent with the Applicable Development Code and base zone purpose statements. You can see several of those listed there, and the details are in your staff report. So on November fourteenth, Planning Commission held a public hearing and they recommended council approve the ordinance in number one, which is attachment fee. But there is, what they did not recommend approval, if you wanted to consider that as the side yard setback in the RM zone only, and that's in the second ordinance. So we did follow all of our public notice requirements and state notice requirements for this. We'll be waiting for your decision, and when you make a decision on one or both ordinances, they would go into effect thirty days from the effect, when you sign the ordinance and adopt it. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, so do any counselors have clarifying questions regarding the staff report? Counselor Johnson?
I do. And can you tell me, we're talking about the setbacks now, and I'm trying to think of the name, I think that subdivision is Morning Star out by Walmart? Is that what it's called? I just wonder, what are those setbacks? I mean.
Coastal Farm, the, the houses behind Walmart or?
Yeah, yeah. Where is that whole?
I don't remember, but one-story dwellings, a lot of them are one-story, those would have a, could have a three-foot setback. If it was two, if it's a two-story dwelling, they have five-foot setbacks.
Okay, because, so. I'm sorry, I remember when they, when they went in, people were saying, well, gosh, they're really close, really close, you know, like you could just shake your neighbor's, you know, hand through the window. And so is this going to make it, okay, the setback's going to be less, like, by two feet?
So.
Yeah, that, that was the.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, so I'm kind of, that's about three feet. So the property line, house? Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh-huh.
You can't even put your trash cans on the side of the house. Well, that's just me.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, a lawnmower, maybe? Yeah, that's what I was wondering, you know, because, I mean, apparently they've gotten along okay, and so I, you know, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, but I was just kind of getting it in my mind as to how close that's going to be, so, but.
Thirty-six inches?
Yeah, yeah, really. Hi. All right, thank you, Ann. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. And I forgot to note that we did receive two letters that were provided to you earlier today, one from Matthew Konzer in support of the second ordinance, and one from Cameron Settlemeyer against the second ordinance. I mean, yeah.
Any, any other counselors have questions for, for Ms. Ann?
Well, yes, I'm not sure if this is the right place to ask it, but I'm looking at the.
Well, it says, do any counselors have any clarifying questions? That's why we're at that section now.
Right. Well, on, on the way the options we are given read, that would be later when we.
Yeah, be later, yes. And so if no other counselors have questions, I'll move on to the next item in the public hearing note. We will now be taking public testimony. If anyone wishes to enter and exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe it and then present it to the city clerk. Has anyone registered? No one signed up to talk. So we have no one signed up to talk this, to discuss things this evening, at least here. I will call those, those registered to speak first. No one has registered to speak. We will now be taking public testimony from those who did not register to speak beforehand. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand if you are attending in person. If you're attending virtually, please turn on your camera and raise your hand to be called upon, or if you're attending by phone, please unmute yourself and state your name, and so you can be called upon. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in favor of the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak in opposition or express concerns about the application? Does any member of the audience wish to speak neutrally of the, of the application? Does any member, any staff member wish to respond? There was no, the testimony? There's none presented? Does anyone have procedural questions that would like, they would like to raise at, at this time? Does counsel have a question for staff? I declare this public hearing closed at seven oh seven PM. Does the council wish to discuss these amendments? Counselor, Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes, I'm looking at the options that we have on, on approving these in any way, shape or form. I'm inferring that option number three is we would approve ordinance number one, just as it's written, but we would approve option number two as it was modified or requested modified by the Planning Commission.
No, it, that option is if you wish to modify ordinance one and/or ordinance two, any of the proposals that staff prepared, staff wrote the, the ordinances, you could elect to adopt option one and/or two, ordinance one or two, as modified by you. The Planning Commission did not modify the ordinances before you. I separated out the packet of amendments into two ordinances. So Planning Commission recommended the items in ordinance one and not in ordinance two.
But the Planning Commission recommended the change from three to five feet for the backyard setbacks.
Right, that's just in ordinance two. So if you would not like to make that change to the Development Code, then you would make a motion to only adopt ordinance number one.
So there's no way to do, to make that change tonight? So there's no way to do, to make that change tonight and then adopt one and two?
Would we have to vote?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
If we did not adopt ordinance two, nothing would, the setback issue would not change from what it currently is, is that correct?
Correct.
So if we don't want any change, we don't do ordinance two?
Correct.
If we, thank you.
So to follow that, the impact of two, so it's currently five feet for no matter what size the house is? Is that what I'm hearing?
It's, for single middle housing, it's three feet for one-story developments and five feet for two-story developments. Three or more stories is 10 feet.
Okay.
The request is in the RM zone only, not in the other RS zones, RS 10, RS 6.5, and RS 5. In RM only to allow a reduced setback for two-story dwellings that are single or middle housing, but retain a five, well, it should be a 10-foot setback for taller buildings or multifamily development.
So it's basically taking a two-story to three feet? Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. And one of the, you know, reasons to consider that is that the side yards of five feet, other than providing more separation to your property line, don't really offer that much usable space. And it might enable a house, well, it might enable a bigger house than on a narrower lot. I don't know. But, you know, I think Mr. Konzer provided some comments in his letter.
Yes, I saw that.
Does, if we don't approve option number two, ordinance, ordinance number two, does that put us out of compliance in any way, shape, or form?
No, the only area that we are not in compliance with is in Article 10 related to the manufactured homes and prefabricated structures. That's all contained in ordinance number one.
Councillor Olson and Councillor Novak?
I don't have anything.
Oh, you don't? Okay.
Having done some maintenance on my two-story house on a ladder, three feet away from the house, I don't think I could climb a ladder. It's that close to the house. Now, maybe I've got a neighbor that doesn't mind if I encroach on his yard, but if he's built a fence there, I can't encroach. So I don't think that's, it's a very good idea to have, have the spacing that close.
Yep. Staff recommends you-
Now, is that something the state is mandating?
No, this was a request, and after the work session in August, there seemed to be support for the request, which is why it's here. Staff does not care either way what the outcome is.
Do you dare, Naval, who requested it?
Matthew Konzer requested it.
Who?
Matthew Konzer requested it because I believe that in the development that you recently approved and the zone change south of Home Depot, that they will be doing narrow lot detached housing. They feel that's, that there's a market for that rather than the attached townhouse product.
Well, it seems like maintenance and also fire safety is jeopardized by being that close.
The fire separation for fire is six feet, so three feet still meets the building code. So three feet and three feet.
Right.
Yeah.
Councillor Kupczynski?
I move the City Council adopt the first ordinance to amend the development code as detailed in ordinance Exhibit A and further describe in the findings and conclusions from the staff report provided in ordinance Exhibit B for planning file DC 0222. This motion is based on the findings and conclusions in the staff report dated December 2nd, 2022, and findings in support of the decision made by the City Council during deliberations on this matter.
Second.
So I need to read the rest of this packet though, correct? Because he got ahead of me.
Right, but we can, we can vote on, vote on them separately, like-
Councillor Kupczynski?
No, what I'm saying is that, so I went to the, discuss the amendments, and I should have read before you said his motion, there are two different ordinances for the public hearing to be thorough.
Right, you can, you can finish reading within the packet and stuff, but we can, we can, on this vote to, go ahead and read it, we'll redo the motion, and then you can approve this, and then if you do, I'll read this, I'll read this ordinance tonight.
Okay, so let me go ahead and read this, because I have to stay, follow this by state law. There are two different ordinances for your consideration, page 15 and 43 of your packet. Motion for your consideration on the dais, page six of the council packet. Would the city attorney please read the ordinance in title only?
So since we already have a motion on the floor, it'd be better we could, we could go ahead and vote on that, and then if, and then I'll read it, and we'll, we'll vote again just to clarify.
So we're good? We have motion in the second? All those in favor say aye. Go ahead, councillor.
So which, which way are we going now? This is-
Ordinance number one.
Ordinance one.
Three feet or five feet?
This one doesn't change that. This one hasn't, doesn't have anything-
Doesn't change it.
That's ordinance two.
Okay, that's what I want.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
That's correct. Was there a second to raise motion? Oh, Maryland.
So go ahead and make your comment, please.
So you're asking for the first reading?
For the first reading, yes. Okay, so we have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye of ordinance one.
Aye.
I'm opposed to it.
Councillor Olson is opposed to it, okay?
Excuse me.
Yes.
Sorry, your city clerk is also behind. I believe that Mr. Kupczynski, Councillor Kupczynski made a motion-
I can't hear you. Is your microphone turned on?
Yes, it is. I believe that Councillor Kupczynski made a motion to adopt the ordinance. Is that the motion that was, that was printed in front of you for the land use decision?
He read it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll, for our ordinance one, correct? Okay.
So I'm gonna read ordinance one now, and we're gonna make them, and then you can make a motion for approval, a reading of a second time in title only, and it sounds like that probably won't be-
That's okay. We have followed procedures.
Okay. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
Would the councillor like to make the motion read in ordinance for the second time in title only?
I would move to read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
I'm opposed. I think there's confusion on, on this. I'm opposed.
Thank you. Motion failed. So we'll bring that back next meeting. Thank you.
Would you like me to go ahead and read the second one as well, or?
Well, just read the first one in title only.
The second, or the second ordinance?
The second ordinance in title only, yes.
Okay, yes. An ordinance amending ordinance number 4441, which adopted the City of Albany Development Code by amending the Albany Development Code text and adopting findings.
Is there a motion? Is ordinance two? Is there a motion?
If we don't do one-
Can you adopt this one if you haven't?
Yeah, if we don't do one, can, does it pay to do two?
They're distinctly separate.
Yeah, they're separate.
They're separate motions.
Separate ordinances.
Separate, separate ordinances, yes.
That's the one I don't want, so it's just-
So somebody's, no one's made a motion to read in title only, so it just dies, correct?
If, if we agree with Planning Commission, then, and, and we don't think-
You could put it to bed easily by reading it a second time in title only tonight and voting that we do not adopt it.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's go and vote on the first reading, correct?
This week, so we had a first reading. So if, if you would like to vote on it tonight, we could vote on, we could have a second reading, unanimous second reading, and then we can-
Okay.
Vote on it and vote.
So would the councillor like to make a motion to read the, read the ordinance in title only a second time?
I would move to read ordinance two second time in title only.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
Thank you.
I'm not sure.
So much for putting it to bed. Okay.
That takes care of that. So the 28th, we'll be talking about it again?
Yes, we'll bring them both back on the 28th.
Thank you, Ann. Next agenda, business from the public. Was there any business from the public? I have one person signed up for business from the public. Director Grotto? Director Grotto?
Good evening. Lisa Grotto, Albany Downtown Association Executive Director, and I just wanted to give you a quick downtown update. First off, I wanted to thank our Mayor Johnson, Councillor Smith, and Councillor Bartholomew for coming to the downtown twice around Christmas parade and community tree lighting. It was a wonderful event, and a lot of people were there, and thank you so much for attending as well. Also, wanted to say that the Land of Misfit Toys that was held by Albany Civic Theater was well-attended and a fun new event for kids in downtown. Coming up, we have our downtown Christmas poster hunt continuing through Monday, and entry forms for that can be found at the downtown office or online. Albany Visitors Association Nighttime Magic Holiday Light Contest is continuing. Publics invited to vote on the beautifully lit homes through Sunday, which is December 18th. Maps are available at the Visitors Association office, on the website, and on the Albany Explorer app. Monteith House has their Sleigh Bells Sing event, which is caroling on horse-drawn wagons. That's this Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and tickets are available at monteithouse.org. The White Spire Church will be having their New Year's Eve sing-along, which they do on Christmas Eve every year, which is the 24th. And the next first Friday in historic downtown Albany is January 6th. Last month, I shared the downtown unwrapped winners, and in this month's issue, we do have photos of the winners, and thank you, Mayor Johnson, for selecting the Mayor's Choice Awards. There's more photos online. And also wanted to say that newsletters are available here at City Hall, at the Visitors Association Downtown Association, as well as the Carousel, Brim Coffee, and Margin Coffee. And one last thing to say, please remember to shop local, shop downtown, and dine downtown this holiday season. So help us make it strong through the ending stretch here, and everybody have a wonderful Christmas.
Thank you very much, Director. I have a card for you. I'll bring it by tomorrow. Thank you. Is there anyone attending virtually or in person would like to, that did not attempt to speak, would like to address the council? Thank you. Item six on the agenda, first reading of an ordinance, Albany Municipal Code 7.84.270, trespassing update, Chris Shindel, quote compliance.
And Mr. Mayor, both of the first two ordinances are housekeeping ordinances, and both of the first two names, Chris Shindel and Mary Dibble, Chris has had to address a family emergency, and Mary's grappling with an ongoing illness.
Oh.
So you've heard about the first one on Monday night. The first one, again, they're both housekeeping. This doesn't reflect any change in enforcement. It's a movement of an applicable, applicable piece of code from Section 18.28 to 8.05, and it just allows the continued enforcement as it, as it has been in the past.
Relocation?
Yes, well, it's, you created the chapter eight-
Yep.
And you moved, okay. The second one, I'll just go straight into that, is really just changing the name of the Tree Committee to the Parks Recreation Trees Advisory Committee, all throughout that document that it's referencing, that part of the code. And that's it. Any questions?
Nope. Council, you have any questions? Okay.
I would move to adopt the ordinance on page 58 as written.
Second?
Well, councillor, I'll have to read the ordinance.
Yes, read the ordinance.
Thanks. An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code, Section 7.84.270, trespassing and declaring an emergency.
Would the councillor like to make a motion to read the ordinance a second time in title only?
I move we read the ordinance a second time in title only.
Second.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Motion passes. Thank you.
An ordinance amending the Albany Municipal Code, Section 7.84.270, trespassing and declaring an emergency.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you. The next, the next one is Albany Municipal Code Amendments to Address Portable Toilets.
Oh wait, we've gotta do the tree one. I gotta read that.
Oh, I thought we were gonna do the tree one.
That was the, the trespassing one. This is the tree one.
Oh, tree one, okay. Albany Municipal Code 7.98, tree regulations, housekeeping changes. City Attorney?
An ordinance amending the sections of Albany Municipal Code Title 7.98, Public Peace, Morals, and Safety, Tree Regulations, where the City Tree Commission is referenced by changing the name from City Tree Commission to Parks Recreation and Tree Advisory Commission.
Would the councillor like to make a motion to read the title a second time in title only?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you. Motion passes. Now we're on to municipal code.
One more time, I had to read the second, second reading now, yeah.
Okay.
An ordinance amending the sections of Albany Municipal Code Title 7.98, Public Peace, Morals, and Safety, Tree Regulations, where the City Tree Commission is referenced by changing the name from City Tree Commission to Parks Recreation and Tree Advisory Commission.
Move to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
I'm opposed to it.
You want to bring it back?
Nope.
Nope.
No, that's right.
It passed.
Five to one.
Five to one.
Yeah, five to one. Thank you. Okay, now we can move on to the next one. It is Albany Municipal Code Amendments to Address Portable Toilets, Director Bailey, page 71, the ordinance is on page 71 of your packet. City Attorney? Read it. Are you gonna go first?
I think- I just want to give-
Director Bailey's gonna talk about it.
A 32nd staff report.
Please take your time.
Hello, good evening, council and mayor. We're back again with portable toilets for hopefully the last time for a very long time, I hope. We were last here in October and presented some draft code language. The only requested change from the council was to eliminate the screening requirement, which we did. You can see in the packet, we struck through that language, and therefore I'm happy to take questions, and then I'm looking forward to a vote.
Counsel, any questions for Director Bailey?
Thank you, thank you for persevering.
Thank you for your input.
When do we expect to see it there by the station?
See, what's that?
The, the toilet, the outdoor toilet at the station.
Oh, at the train station?
Yeah.
That project has been delayed by the dreaded supply chain issues and price increases, so we, the original grant that was approved for that project is now not enough funding. We're going, we're requesting additional funding from the state and hope to get that, and so it'll pick back up hopefully this summer.
Maybe in my lifetime.
I, I hope you get to see it. It's gonna be beautiful.
City Attorney? Thank you, Director Bailey.
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 9.04, Maintenance of Property.
Would the councillor like to make a motion to read the title sec, for a second time in title only?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 9.04, Maintenance of Property.
Counsel?
Move for the adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you. Go back to my agenda. So next on the agenda is adoption of a resolution, approve the revised transit lodging tax policy, and changing the name of the TLT Advisory Committee to the Tourism Advisory Committee, Director Jaeger and Sean Kidd.
And Director Jaeger is also out this evening, so I'm standing in for her, and I'll just, a couple of quick comments. This draft policy, as you heard the other night, does not affect current spending levels or commitments, nor does it exclude any outside agency from current or future funding from the city. This policy is about stewardship, and the laws with which it complies promote responsible use of public funds with accountability. The, now, the policy also changes the current TLT Advisory Committee into a dedicated tourism advisory committee, which focuses on the promotion of tourism. The TLT Advisory Committee has reviewed this policy at their August and November 2022 meetings. meetings. The committee suggested some revisions, and those revisions have been incorporated. One exception, the city's ORS mandated minimum spending on tourism activities was included in the current policy at 40%, and been included in this revision in keeping with the city's goal of transparency. It's now 44.5%, not 40%, as the current policy states. At its November 2022 meeting, the committee voted unanimously to recommend council approve this policy with their suggested changes. And I would ask you to go ahead and approve it as well, and I stand by for any questions as does our City Attorney, Sean Kidd.
Counsel, any questions? Counsel Novak?
I don't have a question. Is this an okay time to?
Will we talk, yes, it is.
Yes, thank you. I would like to make a motion to table this resolution pending further information that I feel I need myself from ORLA and also the seating of a new council.
ORLA is a lobbying organization. It's not the state government, and while I would, you know, I would welcome, certainly encourage you to obtain that information, this is something that we have to do to comply again with, and I'll give you the citation with ORS 279, which is Public Contracting and General Provisions. So, I really, you know, certainly you should seek the information you have, but it would be immaterial to the passage of this policy.
Well, I'm not saying we should not deal with this policy. I'm saying I'd like to table it for a short while until the new council is seated.
I understand. Thanks.
So, we have a motion, and do we have a second? All those in favor of?
Discussion on it.
Sure, go ahead.
I didn't hear you, Dick.
Your mic's not on.
For one thing.
Your mic's not on.
Your mic's not on, Dick.
Counsel, I'll see your mic.
For one thing, I, I think it's important that we retain the TLT Committee, that we'll discuss how the monies are spent, rather than just forging it into the Budget Committee, which my experience recently as Budget Committee has very little discussion and pretty much rubber stamps what the, what the city staff requests. So, I would like to retain the TLT Committee.
I feel the same.
And, therefore, I would like to put this off until we can hear from, particularly from the people who, you can call it a fee, you can call it a charge, you can call it whatever, but it really is a transient lodging tax, and I think we ought to have some information from the people that, that are burdened by that tax before it's voted on.
Counsel Smith?
I'm not sure why this is so difficult to understand. I think we have some misunderstandings on the council, the purpose of the changes, the net effect of the changes, and I, I simply don't understand why other people don't understand what's proposed here. What's proposed is to dedicate lodging tax money that is intended for tourism to tourism promotion, to be determined by an advisory committee that is focused on spending money on tourism. That seems pretty simple to me. It would, could be the same people who are serving on the transient lodging tax committee now. It could be different people, but their primary purpose is to take the portion of lodging tax money that's dedicated to tourism promotion and promote tourism with it. I hope, I hope that's what's clear to me, and I, I hope I'm right there.
Do the counselors have any comments? Counsel Olson?
Yes, let me ask this question then. In a short time, we'll approve the minutes of our October 26th meeting, and it says here, Economic Development Manager Seth Sherry said, "The EDCA," and that's the committee you want to appoint, the five special people that, we don't know who commit, appoints them or who approves them. I guess, I guess maybe the council will get to approve them.
When you authorized it, that's what it was, is the council ratifies those appointments.
Yeah. Anyway, the EDAC will be concerned with the city's economic development, but won't specifically promote tourism. And I'm afraid, and not specifically, but I'm afraid it just plain won't do much to promote tourism, and it's the tourists that are the source of the income for the TLT, and I'm afraid that that is not only going to be diluted, but.
Well, I, I would remind you that the TLT Advisory Committee has reviewed this policy at both their August and November 22 meetings, and they did suggest some revisions, and those were incorporated, and then they voted unanimously to recommend it's approval. And those are the people you're talking about.
The EDAC?
No, the, the TLT, our current TLT Advisory Committee.
I got you and the Counsel, I'm a Counsel, Kapczynski.
Thank you. I have two things. One, I have been made aware by a member of the TLT Committee that information that that committee requested from ORLA was never provided to them. It was provided to staff, staff neglected to get it, for whatever reason, to TLT Committee. So, I don't feel like TLT Committee is as informed as you are potentially implying there, sir.
That is factually incorrect. Orla was present at that meeting. They were there to talk, and they did talk. They did send materials, and Sophie has those materials to present to them at their next meeting. Now, those materials need some legal context. They can't just be forwarded on in their, you know, as standalone documents. So, the plan is that Sean Kidd will accompany Sophie, who's the staff support for the TLT Committee, and provide that information to them.
That information was requested, from my understanding, in early November, and.
I believe it was requested at their last meeting.
I don't know when their last meeting was. I have no idea.
And I would ask, perhaps Sophie can come up and address that for us.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Point of order.
Yes.
Tabling is not debatable. We vote on it, either it passes or don't.
Right.
Then we can go on.
Right. So, let's go ahead and vote on the motion. Thank you very much, Counsel Johnson.
You're welcome.
We had a motion to table, we had a first, a motion and a second. Those in favor of tabling the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
To tabling it? Okay, that's three. Those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
I don't want to table it.
Excuse me?
We got, we elected to make decisions. Let's make decisions. Thank you. So, motion failed, correct?
Mr. Mayor, I didn't catch who the third vote to table it was.
It was Ray, Ray Kapczynski, Counsel Kapczynski.
Thank you.
So?
So, we're deliberating further, or?
Yes, we're deliberating further.
All right.
Well, she had a question that we need to answer.
Okay.
Come on up, Counsel, Sophie Adams.
Hi there. At the last meeting, the CEO of Orla, Jason Brandt, was there, spoke to the TLT Committee. This was on November 10th, which was their last meeting. He just spoke verbally, they had, he had some materials that he wanted to provide as a follow-up, and we said that we'd be happy to pass those on. And that was in November, which was their last meeting.
Has he provided, has he provided the information?
He's provided the information to us, and as City Manager Tredson said, we will provide that at the next meeting when Sean is able to come as well and provide some context.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I noted in the minutes that we're being asked to approve this evening in just a little bit, that on October 26th, no changes were recommended for the TLT Advisory Committee. That's in the record, and I just, I've been at a loss to understand how we went from recommending no changes to now we're transitioning everything about the TLT, and we're going to fold it up and wrap it into EDAC, and it's going to disappear. I.
EDAC has nothing to do with it.
EDAC has nothing to do with this discussion.
Okay, I, but it does have to do with TLT. In the October 26 minutes, it says we're proposing no changes whatsoever to TLT, and now we have, we're supposed to accept a name change and a change of.
What?
A lot of other things, unless I'm just plain not understanding it correctly.
This has nothing to do with EDAC. It's about the Tourism Advisory Commission, changing, TLT changing the Tourism Advisory.
Mr. Mayor, may I please, and I, sorry for interrupting. This resolution, as I explained Monday, does two things. One, it adopts a revised TLT policy, okay? The second thing is, it changes the name of the committee, which you have already approved.
Where?
Well, I'd have to look.
I couldn't find record of that.
Well, you, you did, we did talk about it, and it was back in, in the discussion where you talked, where we created new consolidated certain advisory groups, and you had said that you had wanted, the council had expressed their interest, that we not make the TLT Committee, the TAC, the Advisory Committee subordinate to any other committee, that they stand alone. But you also approved a new charter or vision for them. So, I can go back and find the, the date for that, but this just documents the name change.
The only TAC that I can find documented was changing the name of the Airport Committee to the Transportation Advisory Committee. That's a TAC that's on the record. I could find no discussion nor anything in the minutes about changing the name of TLT or, or changing their, I'm sorry, I can't think of the, their, it's not resolution, their, sorry, can't think of the word.
Their purpose?
Charter. Yeah, the, where you said that we accepted changes to it. I couldn't find any record about a discussion of that. The only thing I can find record of is what I quoted earlier. On October 26th, "No changes recommended for TLT Advisory Committee," Marilyn Smith said. That's on the bottom of page 84 in this evening's agenda.
And Marilyn Smith would like to clarify that no changes have been made to the Airport Advisory Commission. They are not part of the Transportation Commission.
No, not Airport Advisory, TLT.
You, you said Airport Advisory a few minutes ago, so I just wanted to clarify that.
No, TLT. I'm reading it again.
I understand.
"No changes recommended for TLT Advisory Committee," Marilyn Smith said, October 26th minutes, bottom of page 84 in your current agenda packet.
Counsel Novak, Counsel, do you have something?
No changes are currently recommended for the Airport Advisory Commission or the TLT Advisory Commission.
And how did we go from no changes to approving things that I don't remember approving, including a name change? I just, I'm missing, I'm missing a lot of information.
Go ahead.
I don't know if this helps, but I think that was in the context of the broader discussion of the citizen advisory groups and creating the Economic Advisory Group, and at the time, creating that group, and even now, that did not affect the TLT Committee as it existed. They're separate things, so that might be what those minutes are referencing.
So, so the name change is a material. It's the same commission, it's just a different name, correct? That's what I interpreted. Same folks, same appointees, just a different name. What is the problem with that?
But why would they object to it? Why would, why would the TLT Committee object to a name change if it doesn't impact anything? That doesn't make any sense.
They recommended it.
The TLT recommended the name change?
It was within the draft policy that they recommended.
Okay, because Ms. Burris was standing or sitting before us on Monday night, saying that they specifically were asking, or asking us to not change the name.
And, and that, that's inaccurate from what happened at the meeting. Keith Losi is the Chair of the Committee.
She's a co-chair, I understand.
She's not. She's the Vice Chair. Keith Losi is the Chair, and when, as, as that meeting happened, it was a unanimous vote for that policy with the changes that we mentioned earlier that have been incorporated. And there was one change that was not incorporated, that was the number 40, the committee did not want the number 44.5 to be included in the policy, but they were okay with the others, except for some changes which were incorporated, and then they voted to recommend approval of that.
And if I may add, the 44.5% is not a cap, it's a, it's a floor.
That's, that's correct.
A floor.
It's a floor.
It's the state-required floor.
And, and honestly, the, the name Tourism Advisory Committee was felt by most people that that focuses attention on tourism, which was the intent of doing that.
We are, I need, I need a motion on the resolution on page 73.
I would, I would make a motion to adopt the resolution.
I thought we failed.
On page 73.
You voted no.
I voted no.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the changes proposed in resolution number, move, rip on page 73.
Aye.
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 Those opposed say no?
No.
No.
Okay.
I hear you.
I don't know what Ray.
What'd you say?
I said aye.
Aye.
Okay.
The motion passes 42.
All right.
Thank you. Award of, next agenda, item eight, award of a contract, multiple contracts for water and wastewater treatment chemicals. Director Bailey? Oh, you're not Director Bailey. You changed your hair.
Got taller, too.
Scott LaRocque, the Water Superintendent. What you have in front of you is a recommendation to approve multiple contracts for the water and wastewater treatment plant. Basically, we went through a formal bid process for all of our bulk chemicals at both, both the water treatment plants and the water reclamation facility. Excuse me. And coming out of that process, we had five different bidders, five different companies. Every single one of them bid on multiple chemicals, so we had a very good response, and I feel that the prices that we got were very fair, and felt very good about the process. Small plug for budgets in the future. When we set up our budget that we're on now, it was over two years ago, and since then, we've, you know, with inflation being what it is, fuel prices being what they are, and in the economy, prices on chemicals have gone up pretty significantly. So, when you're looking at the budgets that we're going to be working on in the coming weeks, you're going to see a pretty large increase on those, so most of them have at least doubled in price. So, it'll be a pretty significant increase when you're looking at the water and wastewater treatment plants. So.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Ms. LaRocque? Okay, you answered her question, mine too. Is there a motion? You have one, Counsel Olson?
I move we approve the request.
Seconds?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is adoption of a consent calendar.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to discuss nine, 9B9.
9B9.
Mm-hmm.
Let me find it. Accept abstract votes on the November 8th, 2022 candidate election?
Mm-hmm, yeah. I just, I just want to say congratulations to all the new counselors and to you, Mr. Mayor. It was a very, very. Mayor. It was a very, very well-run campaign for everyone and it was very positive. I didn't hear any negatives and I think that's really says a lot about the City of Albany. So I just want to congratulate everyone on their election. And so with that, I would move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Counselor Olson had something.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. I have questions about nine B six, seven, and eight.
Nine B six, seven, and eight.
And it's Lennar Northwest.
Lennar Northwest? Is there someone here can address that? Would you mind if I'm calling him up? So it's the accepted easements for Northwest for Lennar.
These are easements in the middle of the block and they're twenty feet wide. So what happens to those twenty feet when the neighborhood develops? Do they get paved? Are they grass? Are they, can the neighbors use them? What is, what happens with them?
So these easements are for public storm drain lines that have already been installed. Yeah, they just weren't caught on the original plat. So they'll just be able to use them like any other portion of their yard. So kind of as is. So when they develop, they just can't build over the easements. Easements will just be unbuildable space that they can use as yards.
So if the neighbors agreed to it, they could build a fence right down the middle of it and they use a half of each easement for each yard, extra ten feet?
Pretty much, yeah.
Good. Okay. I just wanted to make sure it was a
On the record.
Catch-all, kind of a pass-through where kids gather and loiter and cause problems. They've been a problem the whole twenty years I've been on the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What's your name again?
Aaron Hiemstra.
Nice to meet you. Okay. Okay, would the council like to make a motion or? We already voted on it? Well, he, because Counselor Olson added his thing. So let's go ahead and vote on it because there was a motion and a second. Do you capture that?
Well, I think.
Adoption of the consent calendar?
I think Bessie did.
I did.
Bessie made the motion.
I seconded.
You seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you. Next is staff reports. Number ten, reclassification of wastewater treatment facilities operator to lead wastewater operator, Director Bailey. Page one thirty-three and one thirty-four of your packet.
Did Mr. Mayor's nine C looks like an award of contract?
Oh, that's part of consent calendar.
No, I'm sorry. You're right. Correct.
Floor is yours.
Good evening, councilors and Mr. Mayor. Staff, my name is Craig Prosser, the wastewater superintendent. This is Brian Stevens, a water reclamation supervisor. Staff request to the Council.
Can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Staff, staff request the City Council by motion to approve a reclassification of one FTE wastewater treatment facilities operator position to a lead wastewater operator position at the Albany Millersburg WRF effective January one, twenty-twenty-three. City currently has five full-time treatment facility operators and one treatment facilities technician along with a treatment plant supervisor overseeing processes and equipment that treat and clean over three-point-eight billion gallons of wastewater annually. In twenty-twenty-two, the city expanded its wastewater treatment capabilities to include a new multimillion-dollar bio-solids composting facility. And again, if you haven't had a chance to get out there and take a look, please come on out for a tour. The composting facility represents a complex, complex and significantly new treatment process that involves additional staff, time, equipment, materials, data management, regulatory requirements. In addition to this, the technical workload at the WRF has increased in recent years due to ongoing NPDS discharge permit compliance work.
Excuse me. Are you reading the letter that's in here?
Yes. We can.
You can summarize it because we've already read it. So, so yes, it's just short and sweet.
Okay. We're requesting a full-time lead, reinstating the full-time lead wastewater operator to oversee all, excuse me, the additional equipment that we have. Excuse me.
I think Counselor Olson had a question. You have a question?
No.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Unless it's, maybe I just missed it. What's the budget impact?
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine hundred dollars between now and the end of the Viennium budget, June thirty. So that would be fifty-eight hundred dollars a year, including benefits.
Starting, is it like
January one.
Retroactive to somewhere or no?
No. It would be starting January one, twenty-twenty-three till June thirty, twenty-twenty-three, and then additional fifty-eight hundred dollars every year after that.
And have we budgeted for this increase?
We have plenty of funds available for this increase, yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel, what would you like to do?
Move we approve the reclassification.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Kopczynski and Counselor Bartholomew. All those in favor say aye of the re-
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Director Bailey again with request to add four, four FTE. So she's a quick-change artist. Transit operators.
I don't know why it's funnier when it's me. Okay, I know. Hello, Counsel. Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
First and foremost, I need to clarify something. I was in front of you on, two days ago at the council work session, and I had a faulty slide. My faulty slide stated that we were going to initiate the service expansion in spring of twenty-twenty-four. That was intended to be spring of twenty-twenty-three. And as I stated in the meeting, we're not waiting. This first round of bus stops going to get corrected, constructed, not corrected. And we're moving ahead with, with our plans to expand. So mea culpa on that mistake, and I will fix the slideshow and get it to the clerks to be included in whatever minutes PowerPoint gets included in. And also, I had an opportunity to talk to the Albany Democrat Herald today and clarified that with the Democrat Herald because they had the original slide. So I think they're going to do an article maybe on Friday about, about this very thing.
Excellent.
I was in front of you a couple days ago. I explained that we were going to be asking for four positions to provide for the expansion for the Albany Transit System. The council memo that I have describes the total costs associated with the expansion. It also mentions a million dollars in fiscal year twenty-four and a million thirty in fiscal year twenty-five of stiff state transit improvement fund dollars. We understand that we may receive less than the projected amount, but even if that funding does not come in as projected, we believe we can continue to fund the transit operators as, as projected here. And one thing I wanted to point out is these positions are just the start. This allows us to begin the process of hiring drivers. And we can't, we don't have robots and we don't have self-driving buses. So we're also not immune to the conditions of the Willamette Valley and the hiring of transit drivers. So Corvallis has had trouble. The school district has trouble. We are not immune from those, the, the economic conditions. And so we'll, we'll, we'll do our best to find and retain reliable and, and great bus drivers. The timing of how long that's going to take will really determine the start of when we can actually start the service. And I think that's all I had to say. I'll take any questions.
Counsel, any questions?
I move we authorize the approval of addition, adding four full-time FTE transit operators.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion before we vote? I think this is great, personally. A lot of my, a lot of people that I serve as an insurance broker rely on transportation because they can no longer drive, whether it be macrodegeneration or whatever it may be. So I think this is a great thing for the City of Albany.
It's been a long wait.
It's been a long wait.
Thank you, Counsel. Happy holidays.
So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
Now you may go.
Now you may go. So motion passes. Next on the agenda is the item C, staff report, the Opera House License to Occupy Right-Away, Gordon Stephens Meyer. Hey, I'm sorry, man. Get up, dress up, and show up. That's the model. That's the way to do it.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. I'm Aaron Hiemstra. And so try to make this short and sweet since I'm the last one. So before you have a request for a license to occupy right-of-way for Scott Leppman Properties, developing and remodeling the historical Opera House. With that, they are replacing the hand railing on the stairs and with that, the stairs and right at the right-of-way line. So to meet ADA requirements, hand railing projects into the sidewalk. And so with that, staff would like to recommend approval of the license to occupy for that portion that projects into the right-of-way. The sidewalk is twelve feet wide in this section. We don't see it as a trip hazard or any sort of safety hazard. It's basically just to meet current ADA requirements.
Any discussion?
Just, again, how wide is the sidewalk?
Twelve feet.
I'm always interested in these licenses to occupy because they involve something really tiny sticking out into something really big. And I just, I hope people appreciate the attention to detail that we give to projects like this. Every square inch of Albany is, is under scrutiny. So thank you. I just had to say that.
And because this is getting into compliance with ADA, I'm all in favor of it.
Counsel?
I move we approve the right-of-way request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no? Thank you very much. Motion passes. Next on the agenda is business from the council. I'm going to hear from Counselor Novak first, and I'm going to flip over to Counselor Johnson. I'm going by words today.
You said me first?
Yes, please.
All right. Never done anything quite like this before, but it just occurs to me this evening, people, one of the, one of the rights we have in this country is redress. You know, you have an issue, you have a complaint, something that you don't think is right. In this country, we're allowed to come before the people who represent us and bring our case. I'm disheartened at the thought that there is, a rule is a rule is a rule. I mean, if it was me and I, if, if, it's, I just want to, I would like to think, I would like to think that if I were coming before you, not on the council, just as one of your constituents with an issue, that you would find it in your hearts to consider what I have to say and not just look at how you can force something because it's a rule on the books. I, I think there are times when it's right. I'm not against rules at all. We need them to have a civilized society, and I'm always going on about how we're living under lawlessness because we are. But I just think that I would hope that maybe in the future, there, there would be at least a consideration rather than a blanket application of rules. I, I don't feel as though I would necessarily be heard by this council or really genuinely heard if, and, and that's, that makes me sad. That's, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Counsel Johnson?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Nothing tonight.
Counselor Bartholomew?
Huh?
Hope. Counselor Smith?
Nothing.
Counselor Olson?
Yeah, you say you want our agendas back so you can look and see if we took any notes for con. You want a whole year's worth, all, all my agendas so you can look through them?
Counselor Olson?
Well, I'll, I'll let, I'll let you say, I was going to say that, sorry. I was going to say that they're, they're a public record. We don't need to, to keep them necessarily. It's just advisable that you keep them in case there is a public records request and then we can get them from you and, and take them at that point.
Yeah. Do you want a year's worth or twenty years?
Well, we haven't, no, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a year's worth or it wouldn't be twenty years' worth. I think it's six, but five, okay? That was a year off. But yeah, it's, so it's five years. If, if we were asked for it, but usually a public records request is specific to a certain time period. It may say, you know, three months or four months, something like that. So.
Okay.
But.
Good. I'll leave the wheelbarrow where it is. Thank you.
So thank you. For me, we are at the, this is the last meeting before the Christmas celebration. I would say thank you to the Executive Director of the ADA and the members of the ADA. The downtown twice around was longer than it was last year, but there was a lot of miracles in my estimation that happened that night. The fellowship, the community, people laughing when they're staging, people laughing during the parade, kids waving, grandparents waving, people hugging that hadn't seen each other in a couple of years. It was a very special time for me in the City of Albany when I'm getting ready to light the tree and kids are saying, can I help? Can I help? Can I help? Of course, everyone can help, but to have that outreach and that, that wanting to participate in that event was absolutely amazing. But one of the things that happened afterwards, and I was standing with Rebecca Bond and her husband, this young lady, she walked up to me and she said, Mayor Johnson, do you remember me? And I said, Eliana, what are you doing? He goes, my grandpa's in town. I'd like you to meet him. So I met her at Lafayette Elementary two months ago, and it was that Friday night, I was at South Albany's football game. And that young lady took me by the hand and said, come meet my parents. So this six-year-old, seven, eight-year-old child drug me up in the stands to meet her parents. And then at the Christmas tree lighting, she says, would you like to meet my grandparents? So Albany is, the kids are getting involved. The kids want to know their elected officials. So please take some time to go visit with your schools. Tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with South Albany's freshmen, juniors, and seniors to talk about city councils, to talk about the things we vote on, talk about how we, how we operate and run the city. So please do that. For Christmas, do that, please. Christmas Story Big Land ends on Friday. I haven't been yet because my work hadn't allowed that, but I'm looking forward to going out there. Plus, my wife wasn't feeling well yesterday. And then for the City of Albany for Christmas, I think this is, for me, the most amazing place on the planet. And I hope all of you have a wonderful Christmas and celebrate, eat lots of bad food, watch lots of football, and enjoy each other and have a great, great Christmas. Oh, that's right. Go Bees. Right. And now for the City Manager Report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. It's hard to believe it's near the end of the year, but looking into January, the first meeting is the fourth of January, and that's the time at which we'll recognize Counselor Olson, Counselor Johnson, and Counselor Bartholomew for their service to the city. So I hope all of you all will be here to, to see that, that evening. And then the mayor has forwarded me today an invitation from the National Energy Technical Labs to come and visit sometime in the near future as we start the next year. So we'll be coordinating that for you. And I'll also wish Merry Christmas to all of you. Thank you.
Can I, I forgot one thing. Is, is Matt Harrington here? So Matt Harrington will be launching the If I Were Mayor contest in January sometime. But I can tell you, when the parade, the bachelor's parade, the two winners were in it, their cell phones blew up, the kids were screaming their names. So we're going to be, I'm going to ask for help from some of the people in this room to, to judge those essays, those posters, and those presentations by the high school kids. So I will be calling, just so you know. So thank you very much again. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Next meeting is Jan, December twenty-eighth at six PM here in City Council. Again, have a wonderful Merry Christmas and enjoy your family, please.